Here we are.
Together again.
Hi Kaylee.
Hello.
You are, you are now a co-host and have screen sharing.
All right.
We're good on that.
I think Joel and Michael must have the same tie on, at least from the not part. Do you see it?
We were on sale. We went up together and it was great. It worked out well.
Rummage sale.
At Brooks Brothers.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, nice.
They all let store, so it's dirt cheap.
Don't give away our secrets.
Yeah.
We all like a good sale.
Oh yeah, the ties are only $75 as opposed to 100. So I've got our mill rate for next year.
Being recorded. There's Lisa. Hi.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
And there's Sally. Hi Sally. Just reached out to a couple of the other board members, so we'll see if they're available.
Is Bill at training? Okay, and then I think Shiloh said he was away, right?
I thought he was gonna be on the 22nd.
Okay, yeah, I can't keep track.
I was just out mowing the grass. I was dying. I was going like the wind to finish in time.
Well, you made it.
No, I'm just a big mess.
Not at all Sally.
I've reached out to Blake, Courtney, and Shiloh, so hope to hear back shortly.
Do we have to have a quorum for workshops?
I don't believe so. I think you can certainly have discussion. You're not taking any votes at all. So certainly you could go ahead and advance discussion if you wish.
I don't want to be in charge.
We can, we can turn it over to Jerry and Kaylee and they could, they could walk us through pretty nicely, I'm sure.
I'll leave it up to them or we can wait a couple more minutes.
Hang on one sec. Shiloh just responded. He's in a meeting until 6:15 unfortunately.
Well, I think we should go forward.
Certainly we can do that. Yeah, Jerry and Kaylee can start with an overview and if others join, that's fine, but again, you're, you're not taking any votes, so it's just more to hear about the proposals. Jerry, Kaylee, take it over.
So I'll, I'll start. Thank you everyone for being here. I know it's a lovely evening outside, so thanks for taking the time to talk to Kaylee and I about the proposed revisions to the town's personnel policy employee handbook. I think all of you are know Kaylee Dubuque. She's been with us full-time for two years, employment here for three years. She is a graduate of UNE, has her bachelor's degree in business administration and a minor in communications. And she just recently got her PHR certification, which is a certification that HR professionals sit for. And it's about a four hour test, about 60 hours of studying. So congratulations to Kaylee. She is the town's recruitment and benefits specialist. And so how we're dividing our time tonight is that we're going to do a brief PowerPoint presentation. I'm going to do the talking. Kaylee's going to do the operating. And then both of us will share questions at the end of the PowerPoint. We feel the PowerPoint's about 15 to 20 minutes. So also just wanted to recap where we're at. All of the select board members, we met, HR met with you separately or two by two to explain the proposed revisions and also give you a copy of the current handbook, the proposed handbook, and what we call a summary. Those materials were also attached to the agenda, so anyone looking at home should have been able to access those items. So Kaylee, if you are ready with PowerPoint, we'll start with that. All right. Okay, so here we are. It's May 17th and we're at a select, select board workshop. And hopefully, everything goes fine and it will be placed on the agenda next Tuesday, select board meeting for adoption. Next slide, Kaylee, please. Okay, so what we're trying to do here is we've talked to you all a lot about the handbook. And what we were interested is trying to just say things a different way. So what we thought might be helpful is just to explain what a good employee handbook is. First of all, it sets the tone for how we operate as an organization. It also explains our internal processes, how we work, how HR works with payroll, how finance works with payroll, how we all work together to perform our work, which is to serve the citizens of Kennybunk. What we look for is consistency in a handbook. Do our policies function well together? Does it all make sense? Is the handbook easy to reference? Because if you can't, if there isn't a clear policy or if it doesn't communicate in an effective way to our supervisors and employees, it's not a good employee handbook. It also provides information on the town's mission values. Also talks a lot about our different policies, explains our employee benefits, and also identifies legal obligations and also is a compliance tool for certain things that we do need to make employees aware of in regards to their rights in the workplace. So thank you Kaylee, next slide. A few, I think we thought this would be helpful just to give a snapshot of where we're at with our workforce right now. Right now, we are regular full-time employees. We're at 94. That was upticked for the recent hiring of the eight firefighter EMTs in KFR. We have two regular part-time employees, variable hour employees are 33 per DM 55, temporary seasonal 76. So right now, we're at about 260. I want to say like the variable and the temporary seasonal employees that fluctuates throughout the year. Right now, we're beginning our processes for hiring for our summer employees. So that snapshot of 76 for temporary and 33 for variable hour is an estimate based on what we're projecting to hire for summer and for fall. So Kelly, thank you. All right, let's talk a little bit about the review process that we went through. The handbook was actually first adopted in 1990 and I just counted and it's been revised 20 times. The last time the handbook was revised was in 2015. So here's the process that we utilized. Because it hadn't been updated since 2015, I think all of us could say the workforce has really changed since then. A lot of things just in the world has changed. So what we did, we started in October of 2020 and we formed a, an employee working group. So off to the side, want to give a big shout out and thank you to the working group members. So that was Kaylee, that was Chris Fogg, who works in our finance tax office, Brian Laverrier, public services director, Eric O'Brien, PD Deputy Chief, and Whitney Savalowski. She is the Parks and Rec Office Coordinator. My job was to keep us on track, to direct the group in the discussion, to listen and to come to a consensus about certain things about the handbook. So the group really met every other, every other week consistently from October to January of 2021. And it's through that working group that a lot of the benefits portion came out. For instance, when we talk later about some changes in benefits that actually went through the budget process, through the select board and the budget board was the increase in Mission Square, our retirement program, the employer contribution, domestic partner health insurance, which is actually going to town vote June 14th. That was something that the committee recommended. We've increased our regular part-time benefits to be more, more attractive in our recruitment efforts. And also, the town will be celebrating Juneteenth this year. So thank you to all those working group members. Can't say enough about all the work they put into that. Then after we all met and during, for a few months, Human Resources really drafted the handbook. We did that several ways. You always don't want to reinvent the wheel, so you look at other municipalities that have good handbooks. We also looked at our current handbook and so sometimes we expanded on portions of the policy. We also, at that point, once we had the first draft, it went through a series of review with our town attorney, a labor attorney, Alyssa Tibbetts, and she provided a lot of feedback along the way. Then we really got in the nitty gritty with the town manager and the finance director, thanks to their, to both. We really went through the policies with a fine tooth comb. And we met every week, every other week, we met constantly and really looked at the policies and how they link together, ways to improve. There were more questions that came out of those discussions and Human Resources would track that, then would update the policies, send it to legal, and then talk again to Mike and Joel about that. And that process continued for quite a while. I will say there were times that we had to set aside the handbook just because of other things that was going on in Human Resources. And with the town manager and finance director, obviously the budget season is not a time to be diving in deep when there's other things that everyone is doing. Now we're at March to May 2022. Human Resources met with the working group to kind of say, hey, here's where we ended up. Look at all, all the good things that we did together. Also, we met briefly with division directors to kind of give them an overview of just where the proposed handbook was. Then like I said, Mike and me, Kaylee, Joel met with different select board members individually or two by two to really review the handbook, provide it to them. So some members have had the handbook since March, most have had it since April. And at that time, there was an opportunity to ask some initial questions. So that's the overall process. Also too, want to thank specific employees who really helped with pointed and specific policies. That would be Rich Boucher, who's our IT manager, of course Joel, Bob McKenzie, our police chief, Mike of course, and then Tina Redell, who is our communications and marketing specialist. She really helped with our social media policy as Rich Boucher did with our technology policy. So I'll set on that Kaylee. All right, what this is, is as a snapshot of really the components and the major handbook components. So up at the top, we have the recruitment and employment sections. Things that would be in that section would be performance appraisal process, our promotion process, how we recruit, or how we acquire the talent to make up our workforce, what our job descriptions are. So that's really all the kind of a snapshot of the different policies that was in that section. Then moving to my right conditions of employment, that would be things like our rules of conduct, our violence in the workplace policy, our smoking and tobacco policy, and also our technology and social media policy. So these are the things and the policies that we expect our employees to follow while they're working. Next is compensation and work schedules. That talks about how payroll processes people's pay, talking about overtime and also our comp time policies, also discusses work schedules. Then going around the horn to benefits and leaves. That is everything from our benefit plans. The benefits that we offer our full-time and regular part-time employees, all the different types of leaves that employees may be eligible for. This, this actual section is a, is where HR's focus can really be at. Because it is regulated a lot by law. For instance, a family medical leave, we have obligations to our employees to be sure that we record any family medical leave entitlement. Also workers comp, that also really focuses on our workforce safety. Human Resources takes the lead on filing those claims and managing those claims with MMA workers comp. Then going up to really the last major handbook chapter. And that's a discussion of how to correct and help and coach employees' behavior. And also talks about our workplace bullying and harassment policies. So that's just another way of looking at all the different sections and chapters in, in the proposed handbook. Okay, so another just summary, there's 16 new policies in this proposed handbook. And 26 policies that HR considered would be called major revisions. So the new policies and also the main, major revisions was a way to update and be sure that the town was in compliance in its handbook with federal and state laws. That's not to say that we weren't in compliance operationally. It's just because we had not updated the handbook since 2015 that those new policies and revisions hadn't had a chance to catch up with our operations. Also too, we really wanted to incorporate gender neutral language throughout our policy, so we did that. And also, we wanted to look at our leave policies and also our benefits and think of ways that we could promote an inclusive work environment. All right. So, we talked about that there's 16 new policies. Really what Kaylee and I wanted to do was to just give you a snapshot of, of a few that we thought were especially compelling. Any of the new policies can be seen in the major changers portion of the summary information that was sent out to everyone. And in the summary information, we did specify where you can find that policy in the revised handbook. So first off, we have the town's first diversity, equity, and inclusion statement. We want to say that we hope to build upon this statement, but we really felt it was important that we start. What this statement does is to really talk about what our goals and objectives were when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion. So that policy states for our employees that we really wish and strive for respectful communication and cooperation between all employees and teamwork. And also too, how the town's philosophy is that life-work balance is extremely important. And how we achieve that to help with employees' varying needs, whether it be that young parents, whether it be that we are supporting and helping our older parents and helping them out, just ways in which we can be sure that we're thinking of all of our different life experiences. Also, our nursing mothers in the workplace, that is to comply with law, not that the town wasn't complying, but it's also to state our policy. Technology use and social media use, these are new policies. Right now, we are all going, going through training for email spooling and all the different ways that unsavory people can kind of have warfare on our technology and our computer system. So it's really important. It tells employees do's and don'ts, basically, on how to utilize town equipment. Social media use also talks about guidelines for using town social media, including prohibitive social media use conduct. Cellular phone use was to update the handbook and remind everyone about the main law that we have to be hands-free when using, using our cellular phone use in vehicles. Also, wherever possible, we would try to remind employees that any text messaging that is used in the workplace or for work is, could be susceptible to freedom of access laws. That is what that policy is. Earned paid leave law, that is a main law that went into effect a year or so ago. I believe that Human Resources talked to the budget board and select board about that policy. We have been complying with the law. Again, we're just inserting that into the handbook. Leave for victims of domestic violence, that is a law that employees, employers comply with. The workplace bullying is a new policy for the town. And what it does is defines workplace bullying and the complaint process for employees alleging workplace bullying. Supervisors just went through an online training on bullying in the workplace and how to notice it and how to correct it. The infectious disease and pandemic policy just focuses on providing guidance on town's response to specific operational and human, human resource issues in the event of a pandemic or pandemic flu. Good with that. All right, and these are just highlighted significant revisions. The application for employment, what it does is specify the town's consistent process of how we hire. What is the process that someone does? How it goes from posting the position to offering the job, working through the conditions of employment, and then getting the employee hired and onboard. The performance appraisal process, there's been a forum that HR developed within the last two years. And so it really defines for the employees and the supervisor when this process happens. And it talks about the timeline. This performance appraisal process also has a goal-setting portion to the process, which has been very helpful to help employees identify those things that are really important for their, their objectives in the department and for ways in which the supervisors can track those objectives. The employee conduct and public relations. Wouldn't say that any of the content has changed, but what we really felt was that we really wanted to make all of those different policies that was in the current handbook all together and streamline them so that that can be a better reference of all the employee conducts and different things that employees need to abide by. The dress code is a very, going to be very popular with our employees because it's really basic. The, the current handbook talked about tattoos and the length of tattoos. Of course, in 2015, it was a different workplace. And this is one way to, to be more inclusive in, in the workplace is to realize that we all have a different way of expressing ourself. So our dress code is really going to be maintained within each department through the supervisors and interaction with employees about what's appropriate in the workplace. A drug-free workplace. Chief McKenzie helped us with appropriate language to talk about when we're talking about a drug-free workplace. And it also includes employee notification to employer and resources for employees with a possible substance use disorder. Violence in the workplace, all of us have, are, you can tell it's training month. But all of us are, are taking about an hour online training about how to be safe in the workplace. And this policy really describes main components to a program to prevent workplace violence. And it includes employee and management involvement, worksite analysis, hazard prevention and control. And like I said, annual training. Also, through the town's safety committee, the safety committee continually looks at ways in which we can be sure that we are providing as safe a work environment as possible to our employees. Eric O'Brien and Chief McKenzie have been very helpful in identifying ways in which we can increase our safety. And we have put in a number of those mechanisms. Next, want to talk a little bit about holiday and personal days and vacation. This is also a way that helps our DNI statement in the current policy. I would say that employers, five, six, seven, eight years ago, really was trying to find ways to incentivize employees not to utilize sick time. And how the town did that is the town would grant people wellness days if there was not a sick day. They didn't use a sick day every four months. Did I get that? Okay. So you could have up to three wellness days a year. Now, what this did, what it unintentionally did, because obviously, people who are taking sick time and they're not sick, it certainly slows down production and is, of course, cost to the employer. But especially with the pandemic and also when we looked at young parents and the use of usually came in sick and you took that sick day for your children. Also, too, do we really want people to come in sick? With just now in the environment with pandemic flus, which will most likely be with us for quite a while. So what the town did is, the town already had a personal day and we added a personal day. And also, added a floating holiday to our holiday schedule. That floating holiday can be used in any way, but it also is a way for those employees who wish to celebrate or observe a holiday that is not one of the standardized twelve holidays, that they have that ability to do so. So that is how we rearranged our wellness days and put it back into a way that would be more helpful to employees. On vacation, one thing that the working group had talked about was to, there was just a notice that for non-division director employees, there was never the opportunity to accrue five weeks of vacation. So what this vacation policy does, it changes the non-exempt or hourly employee's eligibility from four weeks of vacation after twelve years to four weeks after ten years. So that means that you have four weeks of vacation earlier under the proposed policy. And also adds five weeks of vacation after eighteen years of employment. For the division directors, it changes exempt employees' eligibility from five weeks after eighteen years to five weeks after fifteen years. And also, too, the vacation policy allows new hires to utilize vacation during the first six months of employment. What that means is that we were finding, finding with our recruitment, that time off is really important to people. Our current handbook specifies that you have to be here six months before you're eligible for a week's vacation. The proposed holiday allows that new employee to utilize one week's vacation from up to six months. However, if they haven't accrued it and they have, and they happen to leave employment, that they would have to pay it back. So it's not like it's a gift. It's really just being able to utilize that vacation sooner. I would say it's safe to say, Kaylee and I get that question a lot. We have, you know, family vacation planned. And under the current policy, we have to say, well, let's see if we can get it unpaid. This would allow the department and the employee to be able to have some wiggle room about that. Okay, and bereavement leave. The proposed policy increases bereavement leave, excuse me, to five working days from three for immediate family members. And then increases bereavement leave to two working days from one for, for, for what we would say aunt and uncle pibbling and niece and nephew nibbling or cousin. So what that does is, is, is identify that people really need to be able to have some good time away to work in which to grieve their loved ones passing. The next up is discipline and corrective action. That policy was significantly revised in order to really just, it's the headings. It's trying to make people understand the different levels of progressive discipline. It also talks about how Human Resources is really a, we really want the supervisor and the employee to utilize Human Resources if it's through helping to coach, helping to write the letters, how to go through the system so that employee rights are, are maintained correctly. Also, our grievance procedure. It specifies if an employee wishes to grieve a procedure or discipline the process that is used for that. Also, too, our non-discrimination harassment and sexual harassment policy was replaced. It defines supervisor responsibilities and training requirements. That's probably the biggest piece that was inserted into that policy. And it also stresses the complaint process and prohibitive retaliatory actions. So. This is the budget impact for some of the benefits that were proposed in the proposed handbook. None of this should be a surprise. This was all discussed during the budget process. However, we believed it would be helpful and transparent for everyone to see that. So dental and vision, those two benefits would be added for our regular part-time employees. If you remember on the workforce snapshot side, slide, that was shown a little while ago, we, we currently have one employee that is in that category. And we are right now advertising for another employee position. Adding domestic partner coverage, that is the budgeted amount that will depend on town vote on June fourteen. But if that is voted in the affirmative, that is the estimated cost, although we feel that it won't, that is a maximum cost on that. When we talked about the increase in employer contribution for the 401A, that's changing the percentage from six point five percent to seven point five percent. And that is estimated at forty-two, three, two, three. And then also the observance of Juneteenth holiday. This year, because it falls on a Sunday, we will be observing it on the twentieth. And of course, with any type of holiday for our people who, who have to work the holidays, that overtime cost would be consumed in our operating budget. Okay, and we're done. Thank you. Hi, Courtney.
Hi, Jerry. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Pretty good. Phenomenal job. I just had a quick question for you, something I've been thinking about since we met and reviewed this. Not sure what your thoughts are on it, but is there any consideration from you or the town to look at allowing town employees to volunteer for, say, eight hours per year or something of that sort? And I don't know if I missed that. I don't think we reviewed that. I know there's a wellness day or something, but something I really think would be awesome for us to take the lead on would be, you know, even at the manager's discretion or something like that, where each employee would be allowed eight hours or I would even say up to three, three working days, in my opinion. That's also corporate. So, you know, an eight-hour allotment a year where they could do four hours at the COS or four hours at Habitat or whatever calls to them. You know, during the week, whether it's like going to the schools or helping on field trips that are relevant to their job or anything. I think that would be really cool if we added something in like that. And I don't know what kind of impact that would take. I think Joel's already calculating, but if we could, you know, maybe see what people think about that, I think it would be a cool addition.
I do know if I can say, actually, and that's a shout out to Karen, when we were actually talking about our wellness committee and reinventing it a little. And one of Karen's ideas was to have the wellness committee really sponsor ways in which town employees could give back to the community and ways in which to do that. I will tell you that we do not have a specific policy. It's a concept. And it was really literally just last week that we talked about it. So I would look to the manager about how he would like Human Resources to delve into that or.
Courtney, I think that's a, that's a wonderful idea. And let us take a look at that to, to see how we can do that and remain in total compliance with the FLSA or anything of that nature. But I think it's a wonderful way for us as a employee group to be able to give back in various aspects to our community. So we will absolutely explore that. And maybe something we can do through a policy that the board endorses. So just, we'll take a peek real quick at it.
Yeah, and Mike, just to tell you real quick where that came from. When I met with Habitat on this whole housing thing, one of the things they said they would love to have is more engagement from the town, like on their builds. And I thought to myself, I saw some pictures they posted and then how cool would it be if everyone from the, you know, town offices was like sheet rocking one morning or something on one of these builds? I just think it would be so cool and give us some good headlines and some good feelings. So I appreciate any effort we can do on that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that. We'll want to coordinate that with our insurance carrier as well for, obviously, workers' comp and things of that nature and how that might apply should something unfortunate happen in a volunteer position but working or volunteering on behalf of the town. So we'll take a look.
Yes, thank you. It's great. Lisa.
Um, I wanted to just say fabulous job, but you already know that. You guys are on top of it. I love modernizing things. And so I think that's great. And I love Courtney's idea. I think that's a good one, too. But my question that I've been kind of thinking about since we met is just about the, what do you call it? The sick leave bank? And I was just wondering the reasons for, it seems to be pretty strict in that you have to sign up for it right away. And if you decide to cancel being part of it, you can't ever be part of it again. And I was just curious why that is? Is there like a legal reason or anything?
My understanding is that, from talking to legal, so not being an attorney, so excuse me. I, I believe some of this is how, and Joel helped me too, also has to do with IRS regulations about the use of that type of, of donation of wages. So it's not, it's, it is governed pretty strict. I, I can, I can give you a more fuller answer, but that is what, when we went and revised it, we got a good policy and also our attorney added on to it. So our current policy says basically you, you, you contribute once and you don't have to again. And our proposed policy says that you need to join during a certain time and contribute a day a year in order to remain active. Joel, what, you're the, you're better with anything with IRS than me, but.
No, that's, that's correct. You, you've got to keep on the de minimis side of the, of the equation for the IRS. And this allows us to do that.
I have to say Joel, you're looking dapper with your tie.
All dressed up and nowhere to go. Yes.
But yes, no, the IRS thing, that makes sense. So thank you.
Okay. I can actually see if anyone else has their hand up. So Mike, can you help?
I will. John, John Costin, come on in.
Oh, hi John.
Thanks. Hi.
Hi.
Okay, great. Um, you know, first off, I, this is the first time I'm, I'm seeing it because Public didn't get the pre-look. What a daunting task. And, you know, I think everyone would agree that it was time for an update. So I, I, I really have to salute you in doing that. I have kind of a number of observations and, and notes. And some of them really are questions. If you don't mind, I'd like to kind of go through in order and, and pull them out. But let me give you a couple of kind of big, big picture hooks to hang the comments on. Um, and, and first, you know, I'm the, I guess I would call it the gorilla in the room, what you're expecting me to, to ask about is that when this document was first posted with the agenda, it was labeled Town of Gorham Personnel Policy. And, you know, I do understand that you have to, yes, the, the, the original.
I can touch on that really quickly. We, we noticed it today and we did correct it. It has to do with when you save Word documents, the title can get changed even though it was never called that. And it's because we, we share a lot of policies when we're in the revision stage with other municipalities. So we, we probably use something from the Town of Gorham, which is how that got in there.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I under, I understand you have to, you have to start with something and it's, this is, this is not really a slam. I mean, I, I was curious and I did, you know, throw it into a plagiarism checker and it, you share about 15% of the document with Town of Gorham's personnel policy, which if, if we're academia or, or journalism would, would get you into the red flag zone. 17% sharing with the old Kenny Bunk Personnel Policy, you know, so DNA wise, it's about half and half. And the two, the original or existing Kenny Bunk policy in Town of Gorham is about 4.2%. I will tell you that, please believe me, I, I, this is not a criticism. I think it's, it's much more important what the policy says than, you know, where it comes from and, and how it evolved. It's good policy, it's bad policy. But I, I do have a couple of concerns specifically related to that fact. Is, I'm wondering whether there's any possible intellectual property issues around that. And secondly, I know that you use some consultants and, and the legal team. I'm wondering whether anyone was contracted specifically to come up with original material that, that was in fact borrowed from Town of Gorham. And I, I, I actually could let that go and let you, let you kind of sit on that, raise, raise the issue and, and let you pursue it. As, as I said, I would like to kind of give you the, the bigger picture hooks as, as I go through. So I think that there are some areas, I, I know the goal was, was to make the policy very consistent through and that, so that all the parts were kind of tied off in the various areas of the, the documents. I think there are areas where, that there's still work to go on there. Especially in the areas of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I think things are not fully consistent through that. Another overarching issue, and I will touch on the specifics, is that compared to the existing personnel policy, even more is left to town manager discretion throughout the policy rather than giving policy guidelines. And I feel very strongly as, and I would hope that you would agree that, you know, to really have an effective organization, it needs to be policy-based. Furthermore, everyone has a boss. Everyone has to have a boss. Doesn't work if everyone doesn't have a boss. And while this policy I think is, is very clear in direction for those who report to the town manager ultimately, I think it's very weak in the town manager who reports to the select board. And, and I can give you some specific areas where I think that needs to be reinforced. And in the recruitment area, especially as pertains to diversity and equity, I, I think that you have some, some things that, that can be improved upon. And then there are just some minor little notes that I would add. So with your permission, I, I'd like to just kind of go from the top, give you specifics that attach to those generalizations that I think will give you a better idea of what I'm talking about. So I've got highlights in my copy. If my computer will cooperate with me. I can go through here. Okay. So when it, when it comes to applying for employment with the town, the old personnel policy specified that positions should be advertised. This new version basically leaves it completely to town manager discretion. That is a way that you build in bias. The, the least biased hiring policies are really well grounded in policy. And I, I feel very strongly that that discretionary part, where it basically says the town manager will have the authority to determine the advertising strategy and appropriate medium is, is not the best way to go to tie into that goal of diversity and equity. You should have very clear specifications of how things are advertised. Furthermore, any job that is funded with any funds that begin at the federal level, and I'm not certain about state level, but since so many state level funds start at the federal level, must be advertised. So by not building that into the recruitment policy, I think you're, you're really setting the town up for problems, both vis a vis the feds and, and vis a vis the, the goal of, of increasing equity and, and inclusion, diversity in workforce. Likewise, in your conditional offer of employment, you talk about criminal conviction, motor vehicle license check and credit check as conditions of finalizing an employment offer. By the way, I don't hear any sounds and I've been talking a long time. I just want to make sure I, I'm being heard.
Yes. I'm just deeply listening.
I, I know, I know. And probably people are waiting for me to take a breath.
No, 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 no.
Okay, okay. Anyway, you're probably aware of the ban the box movement where, where people who are looking to build more justice into the hiring, hiring processes are, you know, either, you know, passing laws that prohibit initial employment applications from asking about criminal convictions. And in some cases, actually, all the way through the hiring process, one example would be the state of California. And you're going to say that's one state in 50. It also accounts for 11% of the United States population. Something to look at if we are trying to ground those lofty ideals of diversity, equity, and inclusion in actual actions. The same could be said for motor vehicle license checks. If the job doesn't require a driver's license, you probably shouldn't need to be checked for one. And finally, credit checks. You know, credit, credit checks have very disproportionate impacts on, on, on different portions of the population. And though I know that they are used extensively in employment screening, there's not really good valid reasons for employing them for that purpose. I hopefully I also mentioned at the top that I thought some of the language could be tightened up because the next thing that I have highlighted here is towards the bottom of page four. Relative, this is for, for nepotism policy defined as a significant other. I, I don't think that's a technical term. And relative or related shall include a person with whom there has been or is a significant personal relationship. There, those are, those are very vague terms. Well, of course, that policy is important. I would suggest that that language be tightened up a little bit. You know, a, 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 vague policies really invite abuse. And at the bottom of that nepotism policy, we once again have town manager discretion to waive all of the policy. I can tell you that, that I, I am not speaking necessarily of our current town manager. In my, my experience with the town, the, the idea that the town manager can just waive policy at their, at their will really has caused a lot of problems in the past. If you're going to have a policy, it should be a policy. And it shouldn't be, this is our policy, except when we decide it's not our policy. So I would suggest that you take a look at that. I am moving down through my notes. Okay, for volunteers and elected officials. You talk about appointees to boards and committees being expected to follow the guidelines and procedures of the volunteer committee handbook. Yes, I'm not positive that has been finalized yet. Or whether committee members have been required to sign that yet. But it does specifically reference the personnel policy, which up until, I think about a month ago, was not available to the public. So here, just tying off the loose ends, I think, you know, if you're going to be asking people to sign things, they need to know what they're signing. That there's a kind of end-to-end information loop that could be closed here. And I'm going to have some more to say about that around the harassment policy. Thank you very much for your patience as I'm, as I'm swaying through this. I know this is a lot, but. I did take notes here with the hope that we could get the best document possible. Okay. Under conduct, I'm here on the middle of your page 13, under your capital B, Roman numeral four, indecent or immoral personal conduct. It says including the use of profanity or abusive language. Sure. If you want to say don't use profanity or abusive language, that's great, but that's just a subset of an unspecified indecent or, or moral personal conduct, which is highly subjective. Once again, clear policies are, are the best policies. If you go down to Roman eight of that same item, removal or materials or supplies from the town premises, is, is that town-owned properties? Is that, what is that exactly? We don't, we don't know. Roman 14 in that same section, entering into or engaging in any activity which affects the town's business in a detrimental way or otherwise, otherwise brings it discredit. Again, it, it's kind of vague and that leaves it open to interpretation, either too loosely or too strictly by someone. I think if you can't more precisely define it, then it probably doesn't belong in there. Moving down through the substance use policy. There's a paragraph in there that begins, employee shall not possess smoke and gesture behind the influence of marijuana in the workplace. First off, I wholeheartedly agree, but marijuana is a, a non-technical term. And I, I think what you want is for people to not be under the influence of THC or, or psychoactive cannabis products. But under this policy, if someone ate a handful of gummies before they came to work, they, they wouldn't be violating that. So I would suggest that, that you use a clearer, more technical term for that. And I apologize for my answering machine going off in the background that can't be adding to your enjoyment here. Sorry to, it's just a little longer. I believe I'm getting to, okay. Okay, we are in social media policy, social media use. So going on to page 23, around the middle of the page, employees are not to post or release any information that is considered confidential or not public. There's only confidential information and not confidential information. Non-confidential information that is used by a governmental entity is public. So if it's confidential by statute, absolutely, employees shouldn't post or release it. But there's no such thing as not public information that is, that is not confidential. I just noted in my highlights here that, that you have something about using, like seeking permission to use others' intellectual property and that kind of dovetails with what I was asking about. Parts of this that, that might have been borrowed from Town of Gorham. If it's not a legal problem, I'm not criticizing you. I just think it should be looked into. Uh, blah, 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 blah. I can promise you that I am, if more than two thirds of the way done with my comments. And thank you for your patience. I believe that the next and, and final thing that I want to get to is, is the harassment policy. Yeah, okay. So in chapter nine, nondiscrimination harassment, under 9.1 workplace bullying. Just, and, and, and I want to tell you, I, I take bullying and harassment extremely seriously. I don't mean to minimize the issue whatsoever. If you look under examples and you have gesture bullying, non-verbal threatening gestures and glances that can convey threatening messages. I do think here you're at the point of abstraction and subjectivity such that no one could define what that is. Once again, a vague policy. Once again, a vague policy leaves room for abuse in both, both sides. So that brings me to kind of the nut of the harassment issues. Under applicability of this policy, it says the policy applies to coworkers and division directors, town volunteers appointed and elected officials, and specifies a complaint process, which is a complaint process for town employees. And Jerry, you're, you're well aware of this. I, I agree with the premise that the harassment policy should extend to town volunteers, appointed and elected officials. However, there's a disconnect between the policy as stated here and the town's practice and what the town attorney has told you. Because, as you know, I inquired several weeks ago about a harassment complaint against a select board member who's been harassing me for several years. And I was told in no uncertain terms by the town attorney that you cannot bring a harassment complaint against a select board member, that there is no process with which to do that. So the employment policy says that it applies to elected officials, but there's actually no way to take any action. That makes that policy meaningless. And, you know, I, I'm surprised that we, that legal, like, had gone through this and then would like tell me what they, what they, well, I should say, told you, what they told you. It, it, it's one or the other. If the harassment policy applies to elected officials, then there has to be a means for enforcing it. Otherwise, it doesn't apply to them. And I'm two away from the end here, I believe. I was surprised that under your drug testing procedures, you identified a particular vendor for the employment policy, because I would think that that would change over time or could potentially change over time. And I didn't really see why a particular vendor should be identified in policy for that. And lastly, this is really the last one on page sixty-four. Procedure for exposure to AIDS infection. You can't be infected by AIDS. You're infected by HIV. And that's the pathogen. You may or may not develop AIDS-acquired immunodeficiency syndrome. But I, I think it's been fifteen or twenty years since we've talked about people getting infected with AIDS. So I would suggest that that be modernized. I want to thank you all for being very patient, because I know that was a long, long time, and I'm done. If you have any questions about what I've said, any feedback about what I've said now or in the future, I would be more than happy to.
Well, thank you for your comments, John. I certainly appreciate it. And the point is to have the best employee handbook that we can. I do have, if, if everyone doesn't mind, just two, two comments. One about when you were talking about the Town of Gorham. Do want to let you know, I worked for the Town of Gorham for, I guess it was twenty-six years before coming here. It's not unusual to share employee handbooks who always swap with HR directors. I certainly get your point about using the language that fits the municipality. I just want to say, it might not be unusual. When I was in Gorham, the policies were rewritten several times, and that was part of my responsibility. I'm not saying that those were each of the inferences that you were talking about, but I did want to let everyone know that. Also, to the conditions of hire, I understand what you're saying about certainly being in the box and being more definitely compliant with the law. I just wanted to tell you that for some, some occupations that we have, certain, certain screenings need to happen for our CDL drivers to be compliant with federal highway rules and so forth. So, you know, we can take a look at that language. I think what the, I just want you to know, the point of that policy was that depending on the type of job that the person is being hired for, it may necessitate that as a condition of hire, they meet certain thresholds. And about the drug and alcohol policy, that is part of the, of the appendix. I hear what you're saying about not using the vendor. Actually, the town, the HR director is the designated employee representative for our drug and alcohol testing and random pool for our CDL drivers. And that is the vendor that the town has been using, but we can certainly take a look at that.
Great. Thanks for hearing all that.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Jerry, this Blake. This was all run by the town attorney, is that right?
Correct.
On several occasions.
Correct.
And did she make any changes along the way?
To the, to the, oh, to certain policies, yes.
Okay, and so what exists today has been vetted and approved by our legal team, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I, I don't think a lot of John's comments are well-taken. I appreciate his going through the document with a fine-tooth comb. And, and I think he's brought up some interesting points. But there is no intellectual property rights and documents of this type. If that were the case, then the, the legal profession would grind to a halt. The fact of the matter is, is that it's common practice in, in all of town government, in the legal world, just about everywhere across the board, other than in academia, to share language. There's absolutely nothing impermissible about that, and there are no intellectual property rights that I've ever heard asserted for such documents. So I, I, I think that the idea of the policies being vague, I think John made a couple of comments that bear looking into. But all policy, all law, every document that, that exists in our country that has a legal basis could be picked apart as being vague and ambiguous. That's what attorneys do for a living. And nitpicking around the edges of words, I don't think make better policy. If, if better policy means that, that you have gone into a hyper-technical reading of the language, then, then I don't think that is going to anure to the benefit of the town or, more importantly, to the employees who are the ones that have to live with this document. Every document, I mean, the first thing you learn in law school is there's no right or wrong answer. And in fact, that's what attorneys do. They pick apart documents. I don't care what was written. It would be picked apart by any attorney. What I think is, based on my experience, having run the HR function at a very large organization, I was highly impressed with the effort that was put forth by Kaylee and by Jerry, along with the help of Mike and Joel. In particular, I appreciated the summary and the, the descriptions of the changes. And I think that, that we have a very, very good document in front of us. And we can't take any action on it today. I do think that you ought to look into what John is saying, but I would not bust our pick trying to, what, what is the old saying? Good should never be the enemy of, or perfect should never be the enemy of good. And we could chase our tails forever trying to come up with a perfect document without success. That's impossible. Those are my thoughts. Anybody else from board? Anybody?
Blake, I just wanted to say that I completely agree that I think that, you know, Jerry and Kaylee and the, you know, committee that has been working on this for months, you know, I think they did a really thorough job. I appreciate John's policy commitments and going through each of these things. But I think that where we are now is a huge upgrade from where we were. And again, I think some of the nitpicking of the terms is just over my head, so I leave that to the professionals. But if I was an employee reading this, I would feel, you know, very comfortable with my protection and what's being offered to me as an employee. You know, I, I completely agree with where you're coming from.
Anyone else? Mike, yes, Shiloh.
Oh, I'm sorry to join this so late. I had meetings that ran over. It's a pretty stressful week trying to get, get everything out the door for next week at work here. But, um, but I guess my only question was, and maybe this has already gone over. This has been circulated through the employees. Has everyone, people, has there been feedback from, from our employees in the, in the town hall or throughout the organization on the new, on the revised handbook?
So to answer that, if, if I may, there was a working group of employees that started this off in its review. We have met with them and we have met with the division directors. The thought being that the handbook is approved by and adopted by the select board.
Sure.
So we didn't know if there would be changes and so forth. So it hasn't gone out to employees right now, like the mass employees. The intent would be, once it was approved, was for human resources to sit down with Mike and division directors to see about the best way to launch this, either in small meetings. But everyone is required to sign off on the document, but you hate just to give it to it and say, sign a form. So we want to be sure that people understand the handbook. The thought would be to use the summary sheet that everyone, that select board members got and use that as basically the same document. But I do want you to know, we did talk to division directors, who then in turn, you know, some did go and talk and do the highlights to their employees. And the working group would go and get input from employees as we went through the process.
But each employee ultimately is going to need to sign off on this?
Correct.
Okay, Shiloh, Shiloh, I would refer you to the introduction and highlights document that, that Jerry and Kaylee produced. And it's very, it's invaluable in terms of understanding how this process went through. And the second section is called review process, that sets forth all of the steps that they took, including an employee work group that, that participated in creating this.
Yeah, that's, and, and I've been very, very impressed at how thorough this process has been. I did, I did see that. Thank you, Blake, for, for the reminder. So the part I guess I wasn't clear on was if there is a, if something does come up from one of the employees that they have an issue or a question or concern about some element of it before signing off on it, there's a process. They would go to you, Jerry, I guess, or Kaylee, on, on how with that concern to their division director and then come up, come back up. I mean, I don't anticipate that necessarily happening, but I guess it could.
Most certainly. I would expect that employees to have questions.
Yep.
So that's why we're trying to formulate the best way to, because this is an employee handbook, so we want to be sure that everyone knows about it and can use it as a resource for them. Also, too, going forward, we would expect to come to the select board annually and either with any changes or because this, this is what happens. There's no perfect document as much as we try and want to be. So what we would do is, once it, it is adopted, we would most likely have to tweak a little bit along the way. We would like to do that annually or biannually and not wait. You know, the last time it was adopted was 2015, so that was too long.
Okay, no, I like that. I just, that was where I'm going to end up.
I understand.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Certainly. And things may change. There may be new laws. There may be things that get out of date that we really need to. Or we have a new process that comes into vogue that changes another policy that we have.
Anyone else? Mike, how do we bring this to conclusion?
I, I think there is no need to adjourn. I'd just like to close from my end, just to say once again, Jerry, Kaylee, Joel, the employee work group, and to our town attorney, thank you. Endless months, eighteen months of effort. This has been vetted numerous times. I love the fact that we had so much employee engagement and input. So really, really wonderful task, and certainly we will review some of the comments heard this evening because our goal is to make it as good as possible, recognizing that we may never be perfect. But again, many thanks, and we'll be bringing this forward to the board after we've had a little bit of time to take into consideration some of the thoughts we received tonight, which is why we had the workshop. So very helpful.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a nice evening. Bye-bye.